Good morning and welcome to the Housing Commission meeting of June 23. I will hand it over to Chair Parrish for the agenda. Good morning, everyone.
Hi, I seem to be having a few technical problems here. But good morning, everybody. Yes, so welcome to this morning's Thursday, June 23 meeting of the Housing Commission. And we're having it virtual due to COVID and to limit the spread. Today's a special meeting. Hold on just a second. I have to mute this. So hold on.
I would recommend Chair Parrish to discontinue screen sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I still screen sharing? Please forgive me. This is the first time I do this. Let me go back. I'm gonna, if you could remove me from, from the...
I think you're gonna have to turn off screen share on your end. In the meantime, while you're working on that, I can go ahead and take roll call.
There we go.
I'll go ahead and take roll call if you'd like.
Please.
So Chair Parrish.
Here.
Vice Chair Todd Achari.
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham. I see you. I understand through email that Commissioner Cunningham is struggling with her voice this morning.
Yeah, I have laryngitis. I hope it sticks with me the whole meeting. I mean, I hope it gets better.
Okay, feel free to raise your hand too if you need a support. Commissioner Bose.
Present.
Great. Commissioner Doss.
Yeah, present.
And then Chair Parrish, we can move to the approval of minutes.
Yes. Now, am I off screen share?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, but I've never had to do that before, so. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I have anyone with a motion to approve?
I motioned to approve.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Did you want to discuss? No? Right, okay, fine, it's done anyway.
Yes, the minutes are approved. Next, we have oral.
One moment, Chair Parrish, let me confirm that everybody was in attendance at that meeting for the votes. I need to... Commissioner Cunningham.
Aye.
Were all of you there for the interest of time? Were all of you at the last meeting and eligible to vote? Okay, great, thank you. Saves me one thing on my computer. Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Chair Parrish.
No problem. Next, we have oral communication. Do we have any oral communication?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Did we get, I thought we got an email. Did you send an email or was that?
That would not be oral communications.
Okay, great. We have no postponements and was the written communication none? Next, we have, we move to public hearings, which is the 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant. And it's over to you, Carrie.
Yes.
Presentation.
Good morning. Let me pull my screen up. So we are here today with the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And this is a federally required document where we tell HUD how we intend to use the money they are giving us for CDVG. This is due to HUD by August 16th and the county is planning to submit, actually, excuse me, it's due July 12th. So the timelines are quick and we are part of the county consortium. So once we approve this document today, we will notify the county and they will submit on our behalf. Some highlights for you from the plan. The funding allocations for CDVG for next year for public services and capital housing grants were approved in the spring of 2022 by Housing Commission and City Council. If you recall, public service grants are on a three-year cycle. And then the Housing Commission focused this year on capital housing grants, rebuilding together Silicon Valley. And so now, we take all of that specific numerical information and then the narrative and we tell HUD in this HUD-formatted document how we're going to use the money. And so, one other piece that's valuable is that in the in the consolidated plan adopted in 2020, we gave a five-year plan for the CDVG funds. Now, each year, we have to come back and acknowledge specifics of what we're doing tied to that five-year plan. So it's a very well-thought-out process. We work closely with HUD guidelines and regulations and we are on track for fiscal year 2223. So I'm available to answer any, any questions you might have. But overall, this is a reporting. It's not a reporting document, excuse me, it's a strategic document. There's no new funds awarded, there's no new programs awarded, it's just tying together all the work the Commission and the Council has done.
So, are you looking for a question? So I have a question.
Okay, but hold on, I, did I see a hand raised? Whose hand was up first? I think it was Connie.
Connie, thank you.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you, Carrie, for this informative and detailed report. It's clearly a major undertaking, getting all this pulled together. I understand that this report goes to HUD, telling them about our decisions that we made earlier this year. And I read the document and I have no further questions on it. Thank you for helping me understand it a little earlier on the telephone call that we had, that was useful. It answered some preliminary questions and so that took care of all my questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
And for the benefit of the public, Commissioner Cunningham and I spoke just on process and in depth about the documents, clarifying questions as I did with Chair Parrish this week too, so. Thank you for, for that.
Excellent. And next, we have Commissioner Todd Achari.
Yeah. Thank Chair, I do have questions if required, I can also email them to you, Carrie, so. But you know, in case if we are not able to cover it. So some of the questions, let me start with that kind of drill down approach. So on page 23, have, there's a cumulative figure given in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, which is the expected available remainder of CONPLAN. So the mentioned is, of course, total for this year is 418,934, which is in the seventh column. In the eighth column, it states the amount is 792,806. So is that something which is, which has already been, is it a is it the consolidated value over the last three years or is this something which is remaining in the CONPLAN?
Real quick, if I may just ask a quick question, are we not having Carrie present the report to us? Are we asking questions right now before Carrie presents the report? That's the first question I have, before we go dive into the report. Carrie, can you?
Sure. So this is an annual document that's in a HUD federal reporting format, so we fill in the sections. It's, it's not creative per se. So I gave just a high-level overview because of the length of the document. And it's one of the things I should have mentioned, Commissioner Bose, that would be beneficial to the public. This document was released in draft form April 1st. And it's been available to the public on our website since current. So I'm happy to dive in and explain any of the pieces of this. I just wanted to be considerate of the upcoming item as well in our time. But basically, we have been working, we put this in the Cupertino Courier to notify the public. We haven't received any public comments. And then this is the latest draft that we intend to submit to HUD unless we find an error. This is, this is what HUD will see. And so, so Commissioner Todd Achari, I'm on page eight. And I'm unable to find the numbers you're, you're mentioning. Are you going off of number?
I'm sorry, I think, yeah, I think, I mean, the page is page number 33.
Which number is that?
233.
Great.
And if you could, in the anticipated process, you know, if you see the eighth column.
Anticipated resource, okay, great.
Yeah, which is the eighth column. So the value mentioned there is 792,806. And in the, under the, that is under the CDVG. And under the BMR, it is 100,000. So I know that, you know, the 50,000 is from this year and probably the 4,000 is from this year's CDVG. So I'm a little bit about what the remaining is. Where, where is it, where is the figure coming from?
Sure, so.
Okay, so. Yeah. Go ahead.
So we are in a five-year, five-year cycle under the CDVG Consolidated Plan, which is the big master document. But the annual allocation changes depending on the federal budget. So that's why it's an expected or estimate. And so, we currently are getting 388, 459. So we're anticipating that we will have, I think we're in year three of the CONPLAN. It's 2020 to 2025. So we're anticipating two years of HUD funds remaining for '24, '24 and '25, which is an estimate of 792,806. The BMR Affordable Housing Fund, the $100,000 estimated, estimated is easier to look at because we've been giving $50,000 to a fair housing agency. And the city controls those funds and we have it capped at 50,000. So we, we know it's more likely going to be 100 grand. But the column you're looking at, Commissioner Todd Achari, is really dependent on HUD numbers. It's just saying we have, beyond this, we have two years left in the CONPLAN.
Okay, so the way I should understand the eighth column, the 792 is additional to what the CDVG funds are as of today?
Correct, it's additional fiscal year funding.
Okay, fine. Okay, that's very good, actually. I mean, I think, I really commend you for having put together this document. It's really exhaustive, it's very good. I was able to read through it, I was able to understand, you know, I didn't have questions. I, let's put it this way, I should have asked questions ahead of time, but you know, I didn't get the occasion to do that, but anyway. So the, the other thing, other clarify, is in a number of places, it mentions a Housing Commission meeting on May 30th. I believe it would be June 14th, June 3rd as of today. So I can point out, it doesn't have to be part in that you need to be put today in the, in the meeting. But the number of places where I found a reference to a housing meeting on May 30th, I know that there was a meeting, it was a May and now it's June 23rd. So I just point that out to you, so that you can look at it and decide, you know, what's the correct date to be put. Other than that, I have, very satisfied with the document. I commend you for that, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the feedback. The May 30th date is intended to show the public comment period that was advertised from April 1st to May 30th. I will go through the document and make sure that it's not signifi, it's not saying we had a meeting. If you have any, any dates that you find on certain pages, please feel free to email me shortly after the meeting and let me know too. But I can take care of that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the kind of changes that, that will occur before we send it to HUD, insignificant changes. Meaning, this document's almost there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I also saw Commissioner Doss with his hand up. Did you still have a question?
Yeah, I had a question, so it's a, it may not be a specific question or a direct question, but it's a related question. So I think one or two meetings back, I don't know if there was a, there was a, there was a meeting about this HUD fund allocation specifically. But I do remember that there was a meeting on using some funds coming from somewhere and there were two or three contenders. And I could not attend that meeting, but I did submit my detailed feedback. And I was wondering that, is this the same thing or that is a different thing and has already been decided?
The HUD funding is the CDVG funding and the Housing Commission approved that in April and City Council approved in May. And now we've entered the data into this document to present it to HUD. So the agencies have already been awarded their funds and contracts are underway. Now we're just telling HUD that we're doing that.
Okay, so is this the same funding which is going to West Valley Community Services for some roof fixing work? I'm talking about that, that meeting. Was it in April?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so definitely that's great that things have approved and moved forward. But I had some specific questions and Carrie, do you have any data to answer my questions? Because my specific question was that they showed the roof repair work as $6,000 or $8,000 something. And 200,000 plus dollars were shown for administrative costs. So is this fund to support an organization in general or is this fund for some specific piece of work?
West Valley Community Services does not have a rehab project as part of fiscal year 2223. The capital housing project is awarded to rebuilding together Silicon Valley. So if you go to the staff reports, the upcoming funding is outlined in the CDVG Public Services and in the CDVG Capital Housing Projects. And I think you're speaking to capital housing, so I would pull up the staff report on the last page, there's a chart. And that information is lifted into the action plan.
So my question was, there were two proposals, so that means you said that the West Valley Community Proposals was shut down or did not get approved?
Correct, it was not eligible.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Todd Achari, I found where you were referencing the meeting date and I have corrected it. Thank you for pointing that out. I corrected it to today's date.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Doss. That's the detailed feedback that is very much appreciated throughout the process and more so when it's first announced. And we can vote on it. I really appreciate that. Okay, and next, do we have any public, do we open it to public comments at this time, Carrie?
Yes, I do not see any public comment. I don't see, excuse me, I don't see any hands raised, so we can close the public comment.
Okay, great. In that case, the recommended action for this is just to, we don't have to approve it, it's been approved, right? Let me see. Approved, yes, we have to approve it. Do we have any motions to approve the annual action plan?
I move that we approve the action plan.
Okay, I have a second. Commissioner Bose, you're, you're not coming in very well. Commissioner Bose, did you want to say something?
I did hear a second for Commissioner Bose and.
Oh, excellent. I did not hear, okay, great.
Yeah.
All in favor.
Do we need to have a discussion or do we just proceed to vote?
I, I thought that was the discussion, the questions we just had. Did you, did you have any other discussions about it?
I know, if, I just wondered if everybody has gone through the report and, you know, in sufficient detail, because it's a pretty detailed document, so I was just.
It was great, yes.
You know, if, that's fine, I'm, I'm fine with it, no problem.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Connie, did we hear an aye from you?
Yes, you did, but I'll say it again. My laryngitis squeaks up and squeaks down.
Okay, great, motion passes. And next, we have on the agenda, let me pull this up. New business. So the new business subject is Housing Commission Participation and Development of the Six-House Housing Element Update. And the recommended action is to consider preparing and sending a memorandum to the City Council and City Manager identifying opportunities for the Housing Commission to contribute to the Housing Element Update Process, such as discussing affordable housing strategies and funding sources and discussing planned and potential joint meetings with other legislative bodies and nominating commissioners to prepare the memorandum. Okay, so it's kind of a hefty one because we have a memorandum and that's why Carrie was trying to speed things along because we do have a hefty one. So for this item, do we want to open it to, open to the public for comment, Carrie?
I believe the practice is to have the item introduced by the chair and then commission discussion. And then public comment and bring it back to the.
Do you want to bring it back? Okay, sounds good. So with that, I, I had asked to see if anybody had prepared any items or any, had any thoughts. We are going to open this for comments and deliberation here. Yes, Commissioner Todd Achari.
Yeah, thank you, Chair and all other commissioners. I definitely, this was something which has been one of the dominant things. You know, I was in, you know, in terms of what the mission should be involved in. Most of the time, you don't want to be at the, whatever, at the tailpipe of the housing element process. If you want to fit as part of the housing element process, you're able to address some of the housing challenges that are there in the city. Otherwise, most of the time, we are on the tailpipe side and we are just taking, you know, whatever's the exhaust coming out, we are just absorbing it. So that, one of the reasons why I thought it's important for us to be a part of the process itself. And that was my sentiment to begin with. I had expressed this during mayor's meeting. The thing is that we are still an advisory body. I mean, whatever we say is still taken as, as why, you know, input. And it's for the council and the planning commission to take decisions wherever they are to be taken. But I'm very happy that we have been able to get involved in the process. I believe we have a meeting scheduled on June 28th. And, you know, just to make sure that, you know, I'm not, as, as a commissioner, I took both as a commissioner as well as a member of the public, very active interest when the CEP was formed. You know, when the, sorry, the Strategic Advisory Commission was formed and every, the Strategic Advisory Committee had with the public, I have attended all those meetings. I have made my contributions in, you know, making comments, etc. So it's not just that, you know, I, it's just me saying that I'm trying to, need to get involved. I definitely found the opportunity to, also I got involved as, you know, mainly as a member of the public because I'm not, I don't have any say within the, within the Strategic Advisory Committee's role. But I'm very happy that city has scheduled a meeting with the Planning Commission. And I want to just express that sentiment, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. And I did want to sort of, if we could take one minute to look at and consider what our goal is because we do have a lot to do during this meeting. So if you want to just take a moment to think about what your goal is within this item because this has been a topic and then we've requested this item be brought to the agenda for discussion. I just want to take a moment to do that. So I think Commissioner Todd Achari, you just did that. But I'll come back to you. Commissioner Cunningham.
Okay, I want to at first say that I am pleased that we're on virtual these days because I have tested positive for COVID and I certainly would not want to infect all y'all because I didn't know I had it for the first three or four days, I had laryngitis. And it was only because I had a public meeting to go to that I tested myself and went, oh, guess I'm not going there. So it's very important to all of you to know exactly how easy it is to get because I, I've been very careful. And so, just as a warning, having your shots and your boosters really keeps it low as far as how you suffer from it. But at the same time, it keeps you from participating in the public life. But as far as this particular goal goes, I did, I send my comments in written because I wasn't sure about my voice. But I wanted to say about the Housing, the Housing Commission being involved. I am not in agreement that we should be sending a letter asking for more involvement that we decide that we want to do. I think that the, no, I know that within the housing element process, the Housing Commission is what is termed the Housing Committee. And the Housing Committee then will be called upon during the process. I personally believe that we should defer to the EMC consultant and to staff to decide when the Housing Commission should be included in this housing element process. They have been working on the issues with the state process, which is complicated by many laws. They have working knowledge of the status of the site inventory and the outreach results from the CEP SAP, that separate committee that was set up. They also, I note that when the council changed the EMC process for outreach to that CEP, it reduced the diversity of people included from the city's process. Two council members, a planning commissioner and a housing commissioner, even although very fine people and Tessa is an excellent chair and planning commissioner for below-market rate housing. No one from the communities directly affected by FFFH were included. The people on the CEP have insights already incorporated into the communication loop, excuse me, of the city. Others were excluded by this change. And then I would go on to say, the reason, another reason that I'm not in favor is that sources more knowledgeable with affordable housing strategies are available than those of this Housing Commission. Local nonprofit builders specifically, also charities, housing. Voices like theirs would have been on the outreach panel if it had not been disbanded by the City Council. So I will say that right now, I would not recommend that this Housing Commission be on the joint meeting with other legislative bodies. This is not our area of expertise. Staff time for additional work is not available. The manager's office knows where and how to place staff. The city has more work and fewer staff as time goes on. Rena, Housing Element, The Rise, Westport, Cupertino, to name just a few. An old-fashioned saying is that it, we always have more of someone else's time than we have of our own. I think we do a disservice, a big disservice to the city staff to assume that we can insert ourselves into the process without any knowledge of the impact on city priorities and work schedules. Several of us have said that we have not been making comment. I personally have been making comment at all of the meetings. If you haven't been making comment, then I really urge you to do so as individuals. The city work plan, as an example, is one major example of how work items have been added to the city staff workload with barely a nod to the idea that it would cause other work to be slowed. I think that if this commission is not familiar with the CWP process of 2022, then you absolutely cannot make any further demands upon staff time to support this particular activity of this letter that we're thinking about. I can understand some frustration about the group not being included in the housing element process on the timing to which we feel that it should be done. But I do think that we don't understand completely what, what is needed. And so therefore, I, I recommend that we do not send the letter.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment, Commissioner Cunningham. Did you, Commissioner Todd Achari? You had your hand raised?
Yeah, so in, in terms of the actual item, it's a question of, we prepare a memorandum to the, to the City Council. To me, the issue is that we want to be participating in the, in the joint meeting. You know, both currently planned June 28th and potential joint meetings with other legislative bodies. Potential joint meetings with other legislative bodies, which I'm not aware of. Uh I I think uh the point we raise is that this is a. Once in a eight cycle item and um. Uh the some of us, not necessarily in the city as a housing commissioner. But in our personal, you know, as a member of the public, I participate in. The housing element cycles, uh both the previous one as well as the current one uh at the city level. Uh uh as well as uh uh take an extra effort to be part of the. Uh A Bag meetings, A Bag MTC meetings in San Francisco. So to a large extent. Uh we understand the Rena process. Um uh you know, I there's no way that one can explain the uh intensity. Uh explain the depth of knowledge. That's definitely a different issue. Uh but in terms of being participating, I think the the strength that we bring from Housing Commission is. We we are the people who are actually implementing the housing strategies. Uh we don't have any say in the matter. As I said, we are only an advisory body. Uh we whatever we do will be essentially to be able to get involved uh due the. Point meeting in terms of presenting whatever. Uh points that we have in the discussions. Uh beyond that, I do not anticipate the road would expand in terms of. Uh making demands on the on the. Uh what I would say, the planning department, our community development department. Uh we so I uh the other thing is that, you know, we could not have anticipated. This to be a part of the CWP because CWP and uh housing element cycles have a different uh. Um uh they have they're mapped out somewhat differently. So that is, you know, just in terms of what. I would like to express, you know, why we need to participate. But I'm I'm fine with, uh you know. Uh with sending a memo which essentially identifies our role as more participatory. And you know, we know it, we we are already an advisory body and then that, uh you know. It also makes sure that we are keeping ourselves abreast of what is going on in the city in terms of the housing element process. So that's pretty much where I would like to start.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Tadachary. If you want to put your hand down. So when I have a couple of items that I wanted to present. Um but first I wanted to reference our um. Duties and powers, uh duty, powers and responsibilities. Uh number two point eight six, uh point one hundred. And the first one, first item. Says the powers and functions of the Housing Commission shall be as follows. A, to assist the Planning Commission and the City Council in developing housing policies. And strategies for implementation of general planning housing element goals. It's literally in our first item. B, to recommend policies for implementation and monitoring of affordable housing projects. C, to facilitate innovative approaches to affordable housing development and to generate ideas, interests. In pursuing a variety of housing options. So what does this say? So this this meeting here is for us to discuss how we can be more active. And so what I did is I I did a little bit of research. I went ahead and um went back to the last housing element. And in the last housing element, if you have January uh two thousand fourteen. I am now going to attempt to to share my screen. I hopefully I can do this again and not leave it there. Um. I think this is the agenda. Is it this one? Now that's the agenda itself meeting. I'm trying to open this one. Okay, let's see. Let me see if this is the one. Yes, here we go. So let me try to scroll down. This is part of what I don't know very much. If you see here on. Um of course, it has the usual aura, communication, etc. New business, general plan, housing element, staff notified. And requested attendance from the commission regarding an upcoming general plan, housing element. Joint Planning Commission, Housing Commission Study Session. Scheduled for January twenty-third, two thousand fourteen at six thirty P M. Note to this was a study session because um from what I have seen. Um it says, commission, staff will also follow up with housing commission members who were not present at the meeting. To request their participation at the upcoming general plan, housing element, joint planning meeting. So the housing. Did not have any comments about this. They just, you know, they were told they we have a joint session about a study. Um in addition to this, I I was just trying to get a an idea of what other. Commissions do and their participation, what's expected. Um. In looking at our duties, powers and responsibilities, it's to facilitate innovative approaches. So our feedback regarding the housing development and generating ideas. We should have already been doing this. And by the way, this is not in any way. Um. It I'm looking at this going forward. I've been i- in the Housing Commission for three years now. I don't particularly, um I'm not interested in what's happened before. I'm not interested in in what should have or could have. I'm only looking at going forward. Because when I joined this commission, I looked at these responsibilities and I thought this is what we're gonna do. So we're gonna meet with, you know, maybe housing developers, the um. Low income uh BMR developers and and look at how we can come up with innovative approaches. We should be an advisory committee, um commission advising the planning commission on how to. And how to, you know, like if they have the the environmental right now, they have the environmental impact. We should be as a commission, I I believe. Um this is my bring to the table. I believe we should be saying. These are the policies we recommend so for um housing for the environmental impacts. Do we want, you know, more um green ways to uh build houses? Do we have these studies? We should have our input, I believe, in anything and everything housing based on. Our duty, powers and responsibilities. D, goes when requested by the Director of Community Development. Or the City Council to make recommendations to the Planning Commission and the City Council regarding affordable housing proposals. In connection with applications for development, including but not limited to. Recommendations for possible fee waivers. You know, we're considering and talking, I'm gonna pause from reading that. We're ca- uh considering and talking about how we can get people. The developers to develop what has been already approved. We're in a housing shortage. We should be involved in in research and in proposing these um whenever possible. Uh uh other incentives, the number and type of affordable units and target groups to be served. Any referral to the Housing Commission shall be limited to consideration for affordable housing proposals. Which exceed normal housing requirements under the applicable provisions of the city. And then E, it says to make recommendations regarding requests for money from C D C D B G, which is what we do. To make recommendations regarding that. I, you know, do we make recommendations? Is that is that part of our function? The F is to provide information about affordable housing. Um Vice Mayor Chow has been researching this quite a bit and met with. Some uh developers for affordable housing, has attended some meetings and stuff and. I I looked at this and kind of went, you know, what it what is expected of us? So another thing I I'll take one more minute and then I'll open it to the rest of the commissioners. Um I looked at the city of Menlo Park and their housing element update. I encourage you, I'm not gonna try to share that, but I encourage you to look at that. It's not a very long video. But it has the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission working together on both of these items to come up with. Um the proposal. It's they're at the end of their, they're already submitting it. Their last update was pretty much, here's what we're gonna present. Um so I I highly recommend that. The purpose for me wanting to have this was so that we as commissioners can discuss. How we could fulfill our duties and responsibilities um going forward. Um we have a challenge in that we do have a shortage of staff like Connie, uh Commissioner Cunningham mentioned. And so I would like to be able to discuss how we're gonna do this without burdening. The our housing manager who's carrying a huge load and and preparing mostly right now a very busy cycle. Um so I I think what I'm considering for me, for my goal is going forward. Um you know, how to be connected with the manager, our housing manager. On how that we can assist her rather than be a burden. And then um. With the housing element, we do have a joint planning commission already on the agenda. I requested that to the planning commissioner who more than welcomed it. And uh uh mayor um supported it. So we will have, we we are scheduled to have that. Um it's part of why I suggested that we all have um. Research it so that we don't have to be a burden and we can participate in a smart way. Okay? That's what I, all I have to say. Now I'm gonna start sharing. Anybody I see, any other hands, Commissioner Tadachary?
He had raised her hand before me, so I think.
Who was that? I'm sorry, I don't see it. Who was that?
Connie Connie.
Commissioner Cunningham? Okay.
Um I can defer to uh let other people speak. I did already speak for a fairly long time, so I'd. Like to hear other commissioners and then uh then I can speak again. Thank you, um uh Commissioner Tadachary.
Yeah, so uh in keeping with the that same sentiment, I think it's better that we have uh Commissioner Das speak before us. And then, you know, I can always come back and, you know, fill in whatever I had to say.
Hey, Commissioner Dos, do you have any input?
Hey, Tessa, thanks a lot. So first of all, I just want to clarify that we are discussing over here as per the agenda point number three. That whether we need to have some representation or not, and if we should request City Council. To have us allow or send somebody in those meetings, right? Uh for example, for this uh preparation of the housing elements plan. So I think I have a few points and they're very basic and I'll keep it short. Um first of all, I think there is, nothing is rocket science in life. Um second is that there is always a first time to everything. And the third thing is that it just depends on how badly you want it or how much motivated you are towards that direction. So I understand that this housing elements thing, uh first of all, I have no idea even what housing element means. Uh beyond certain extent or just seeing the document as we speak. But I believe that most of us may be in a similar boat where we don't have much prior exposure on. What housing element means or what it means to um give useful feedback and valuable inputs. But I think if somebody has the motivation and wants to go over it a few weekends or few evenings, first understand what it means. Google up here and there and then see what our current housing element means and how we can improve it. Then I think we should definitely support that person because. Just because we don't have some prior exposure in housing elements doesn't mean that. None of the five commissioners should take a look at it if he or she wants to. So I would say, for example, again, it comes down to if we have a volunteering member or willing member who wants to do these things. Then we should do it. If you don't have the time or don't have the willingness to do those things, I don't think you should attend the meeting and have a say just for the sake of it.
I I think it would be helpful to add at this point for the benefit of the public. That there is a joint housing commission and planning commission meeting on June twenty eighth. And we do have a quorum. I understand all five housing commissioners are planning to attend. And for the benefit of the public, I wanted to highlight the subject matter of that meeting. Um the goal of the Joint Planning Commission Housing Commission meeting on June twenty eighth is to get a recommendation from the commissions, both commissions together. To the City Council regarding which sites and properties should be included on the housing sites inventory. The City Council is approving, is the approving body for the sites inventory. The sites inventory was the focus of the four planning commission study sessions held on January twenty-fifth, February twenty-second, April twenty-sixth and May twenty-fourth. And basically, what you can expect is that staff will be providing a list of the recommended housing sites and proposed minimum densities. For development in the packet for the June twenty eighth meeting. So the packet will be coming out shortly. And that would be a good opportunity for you um for you to dial in and prepare for the the joint. The joint meeting, but I just wanted to make it clear, there is a meeting planned and Housing Commission will be well represented and and participating.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. And uh did you want to follow? Uh go ahead, I have a.
Yeah, so Carrie, I think uh I think the joint meeting is definitely helpful and we'll all learn. We'll all get to learn a few new things or many new things. But coming back to this this agenda topic, are we supposed to decide today that whether we want somebody there? Or we can wait till that joint meeting gets over for us to get a better feel or idea about what things are? I mean, are the two related or totally not related?
So we're, we already have a planned uh s- a scheduled joint session with the planning commission. And the reason for that is because it's part of our duty as commissioners. And when I discussed it with the planning commissioner and the ma- and the mayor uh supported it. Because it is part of our duties, again, um going back to to what we're supposed to be and and. It will come back as of course, um I wanted to just respond, I I missed uh one of the comments. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry for interrupting. So you are saying that. Point number three in the agenda today, that whether we should have some representation or request City Council to allow us to. Be a part of the process. You are saying that it's more a responsibility than a choice, right? We should do it.
Well, so there's two things. Um your question about the joint session is already scheduled. So we already have a meeting that we're supposed to attend?
No, my question is nothing about the joint session. My question is about this housing element formation. I mean, I'm just trying to read the text that it says that should we have somebody and request. To be at the housing, what is this called, special element thing? Only that part.
Okay, so the housing element is only um a process that the city goes through once every eight years. So we've been doing this for over a year now, I believe. And um this is. We're coming towards the end of that process. So the only, the agenda item here is. How could we be more um active as housing commissioners, as is our duty? And so we, because this is always the way we've 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 run things, I wanted. Commissioner Tadachary brought it up and I wanted to also discuss different ways and how do we see. Actually performing our duties. That's that's what this meeting is about. So we have two different things. And in the process of that. We went ahead and scheduled the planning uh session. That's it. Um if I may, are you, is it okay or? Did that answer your question?
That was my questions.
Okay, thank you. So real quick, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Cunningham's um was say something about.
I would suggest, Tessa, Tessa, since uh uh we do still have to add our comments. Would it be okay for uh to request? You can uh comment, you you can take everything in total and then offer your comments at the end. Is that fine with you?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I could, I I'll write this down. It just, I was something I was supposed to respond to earlier, but go ahead. I'll wait till the end.
I think the chair can also, Chair Parish, the chair can also interject as needed in terms of meeting management.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I I sorry.
Okay, um go ahead. Uh who have their hand first? Commissioner Tadachary?
No, Connie, uh I believe Commissioner Cunningham was.
In the, in that case, I do want to respond to a comment that she'd made previously and I wanted to do that before we went back. Um the advisory committee that the that she was referring to, that the city council. That she feels the city council removed comments from different portions of the community representation. Um I'm actually, as part of it, I was listening and we were hearing comments from the public. Uh complaining that where did these people, these groups come from? And who selected these representations? And was it just limited to them? Some people complained that they, their request to participate wasn't responded to and it, it just became a, a thing. So they wasn't removed. Right on the city website, you are able to request and put yourself as a leader of a, you can form a group and still be participant. And you can also reach, add feedback. So it was actually expanded rather than contracted. Anyway, I, in regards to that topic about city removing that, I don't believe that's correct. But you know, it might be a point of perspective. I encourage you all and for the benefit of the public, to go back to those meetings, they're online and listen to public comments as well as go on the city website for the housing element and see how it is going forward. Okay? So it, comments were not, or participation was not removed. And the advisory committee is just to make sure that we have enough outreach that there, that there is, actually, we requested there be more churches. There's only one or two particular churches participating. Anyway, I'm not going to get into comments, just encourage you all to consider that. So now we'll go back to Commissioner Cunningham. Your hand is raised.
Oh, thank you so much, Chair. And I appreciate your response, although I will respectfully say that I, I disagree about the committee and its purposes and so forth. But I did want to go back and perhaps help Commissioner Das understand about where we started in this whole thing. Back in 2021, when the housing element was first being kicked off, April 27th, 2021, and May 11th, 2021, there were two joint meetings with the city council, the, excuse me, planning commission and the housing commission, where the whole thing was described and what the various things, how it was going to go moving forward. It would probably be beneficial for Commissioner Das to take a look at those particular meetings because he unfortunately did not have the opportunity to be in those meetings. At that time, it was made clear that the, that, you know, how we were all going to move forward. Since the council sets the direction for all of this and since we have not been, I mean, we have a formal, we have a formal role. Like I said, it's called the housing committee within the housing element. But since the time it was set up back in that April, May timeframe, no, we have not been advised too much about what the housing committee is going to be. However, just for the record, the city council is aware of all of these things. And to, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that it seems to me that if we have not been asked to participate, then we haven't, it's like we serve at the pleasure of the council. And so what we have is two pieces of input here. One is that the city council has not put in feedback that we, you know, to the system that, that we should be included more. And we do get occasionally an email directly from Vice Mayor Chow, which is okay, if, as long as we don't take it as direction. Because no city council member on their own is supposed to be directing the commissions or the staff. So it's, it's all complicated. This is a very complicated thing with the law and how it's supposed to be rolled out. That's what makes it difficult. That's what makes communications hard. To the extent that people understand what's going on, you know, we each, you know, you remember the elephant tail? You see the, the nose, you see the tail, you see the leg, and everybody's got a whole different idea of what's going on. So in my opinion, I think we need to trust the system that was put in place where we have a, a, a staff members who are excellent staff members. And we also have a consultant who understands the laws and stuff and are working hard to, to, to pull this all together. By interjecting at different places, at different times and requesting responses, complicates the issue even more than it's already complicated. And I guess that's the point I'm trying to make is that the system is hard enough as it is. And my take, it was last meeting or the one before, I said, it's really important, but we don't have to interject as a commission. We can individually interject. And I have been to the planning commissions and I just encourage you also to go. I mean, we get to muggle next week, no problems, but anything after that, we can certainly go as individuals. So I'll quit talking for now and give somebody else an opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. And Commissioner Tadachary?
Is there some way I can share my screen?
I don't know. IT can, is he able to share his screen?
I can assist. I also wanted to remind you, Chair Parish, we do have some hand raised for public comment when it's.
Yeah, we're going to take it to exactly my, yes.
Commissioner Tadachary, can you, can you let me know what you're trying to share? I'm having trouble giving you permission and I want to see if there's a workaround.
Sure, sure. Okay, yeah. If we go to the housing, I think at the house site, there is this, there is this duties, powers and responsibilities, the commission. Really, it refers, that link goes back to American Legal Publishing, which, you know, defines, you know, CA municipal, this thing, there's two dot eight six dot hundred duties, powers and responsibilities. I just wanted to bring up that particular page so that it's easier for me to explain what I'm trying to say. And then, you know, I do have additional comments beyond that.
Sure, we, we have figured out. So Syrah, go ahead and give Commissioner Tadachary temporary co-host and then when the screen share is over, we can remove it. We have limited. Thank you guys for working with us on the tech stuff.
So. Thank you. Oh, that's good. Okay. So I wanted to highlight this. So when, to be, you know, when I was applying for different positions, commission positions, another of the things I had looked through is the responsibility of either the commissions. So if you look at this duties, powers and responsibilities, I believe this was mentioned also by a dear Tessa Parish. But I just wanted to highlight this because it's useful for all of us. So you know, CDBG is just one of the components of our powers, you know, responsibilities. Most of the things A, B, and C have to do with developing policies, helping in developing housing policies and strategies. You know, you look at the item number A, which is the fundamental, you know, thing to assist the planning commission, city council, developing housing policies and strategies. For, 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 it specifically mentions here, it says, where is it? Two dot six, sorry, sorry for scrolling out. Yeah, for implementation of general housing element goals. So it's not that, we are doing anything which is outside of what we need to do. It is just that it looked like curtailed at some, what our responsibilities are and our participation submitted earlier. So I don't think we are doing anything different from what we are supposed in terms of participating in the housing goals and general plan process. I think that is one. Second thing is the session that was held, the joint session that was held. It was a study session. It was not an in session. It was a study where we were told what actually the housing element processes don't look like. It's not participatory, it was participating that. And the second thing, the other we have to realize is, this did not start on own. These were made continuously to the, the council. And at one particular meeting, I remember Mayor, there is a document saying that, which is also signed by the mayor, essentially that they wanted us to decide on what the scope of work that we will be involved in. So that is already a done, a done thing in terms of council agreeing to have us under, have us debate and, and come to the, this thing about what our roles and responsibilities, how, how much we are prepared to take in terms of our, our, what we want to contribute towards housing policies and strategies. So in a way, I don't want to shirk my responsibility, like to not be the person, you know, taking the, the policies and strategies after they are decided at the tailpipe and rather than participate in it. And that's where my sentiment is. We are not doing anything which is extraordinary in terms of changing what we are supposed to do. I think we have, we, we a little bit curtailed in the way of participation. And we are trying to make sure that we can get back into the idea of having full participation to be able to advise the, the planning commission and the council. And I just wanted to emphasize, we are advisory commission. We do not have the liberty powers to take a decision. So by participating, we are not going to change in, in the process. The other thing is that.
Commissioner Tadachary, can, can I ask you to wrap it up? We, we do have members of the public wanting to speak and, and if you could just wrap it up in the next minute, okay? That'd be great. And then we're going to come back again, for sure.
I, I do, I do want to point out that, you know, there was even by us in terms of the strategic advisory committee which was formed, that, that process is owned by the city, it's not owned by the consultant. And that needs to be very clear in, the, the consultants, in, in addition, have engaged a sub consultant. I do not want to get into the, all the details, but I just want to say that the process is always owned by the city. And you know, we are the, we are the, we are, as commissions, we are the people who are involved in the, in the executing, in implementing the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to go ahead and open it to the public for comments. Carrie?
Sure, we do have two members of the public with their hands raised. Please, at this time, if you intend to speak, raise your hands as we will be closing public comments when the hands discontinue. You will have three minutes to speak. I'll go ahead and stop and start and we'll have a timer and we'll do our best to give. There we go. We'll do our best to give some notice. So first member of the public is Peggy Griffin. Welcome. I will open your time.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I, good morning. Sorry. I want to thank you for discussing this and also for all your comments. I think you all have brought very valid points to this discussion. My concern as a member of the public, I agree that at the first proposal for the EMC, it appeared that there, it had not been opened up to a larger variety of organizations. And so I was glad to see that there was some oversight on direction. And I hope that in, on that group, I feel that one representative from the housing commission should also be on it, in addition to the member of the planning commission and the two city council members, I think a member, a knowledgeable member that's volunteering on it should be on it. Also, I believe that the next step in the housing element process is the establishing the goals, policies and strategies to implement the housing element. And since it's already in your responsibilities, I think that this is a good time to step in and be involved from the beginning on the development of these policies. They're critical. Also, I, I thought that the housing element, or the housing commission should be the, or become the experts on the variety of housing options and organizations and explore them. It takes a lot of time and there isn't time in the city council or the planning commission or the staff to do all this research and gathering of data. And I feel like the housing commission is a place where I, I attended a field trip one time to some affordable housing examples. This is several years ago, Connie Cunningham, Commissioner Cunningham, attended along with the vice mayor and a couple other people. And I, I have heard that there are options that may not count towards the, the exact housing numbers, but seniors, seniors have homes with rooms, but there's, they're not going to open it up unless somebody manages who comes in. These are affordable housing. It could be a really win-win situation. Anyway, thank you very much for discussing this.
Thank you, Peggy.
I'm done.
Thank you, Peggy. Yes. And Carrie, did you want to call the next speaker? I believe it's Jenny.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Jenny. I have opened your microphone.
Thank you, Carrie. This has been a very, very interesting discussion. I can see people are very passionate about this. I'll tell you right now that, that I, this is my third or fourth housing element that we've gone through. And this housing element has turned into, I call it a circus snowball. It has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger and more complicated. And I can understand why people are very, very passionate about it. I, right now, I'm just going to take the initial issue with HCD because we've never had so many edicts coming down from HCD before. The, the 2014 housing element, I was probably at that meeting that, that Tess, that Chair Tessa had talked about. We've never had these conflicting things coming down from HCD. Like, like we, Southern California Huts did their housing element last year. There are new things that HCD is coming up with that we're getting blasted with first that Southern California didn't even have to have. I have to follow what's going on here. I also have to follow what's going on in Santa Cruz because my mother, okay, she's 90, but she is a, she has the, she was able to have a home. She owns property in Santa Cruz County. And there are only two incorporated cities that she's involved with, which is Capital and Santa Cruz. I'm having to follow like four or five housing elements in Santa Cruz County. My mother has three neighbor sewer connections in the back of her property from 1920 zoning. And no one can put an ADU in her back area, but I'm not convinced somebody wouldn't try. But I, I just think that HCD has been very, very confused, has confused the public and, and made things worse because they're coming up with new laws like every, every two weeks. And I'm, EMC has been struggling to keep up with them, the public. I wasn't able to go to the May 24th meeting because we were in Orlando, Florida. I've been trying to follow it, but I'm really glad you guys are having a meeting on June 28th. Because I will tell you frankly, right now, I don't think anyone can understand what's going on in this housing element. And I am predicting to the best of everyone's ability that I do not think that even if, if Cupertino brought in a very good housing element and submitted it on time, I don't think HCD will, will certify it. They, they will make us go back and go through it again. But I do think that the more eyes, like especially from the housing commission that are on it, more information. But I, I have grave doubts about where this housing element is going and it needs more participation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jenny, I, I appreciate your comment. And yes, I've been following those elements as well. Do we have any other comments or?
I do not see any other comments or other, excuse me, I do not see any other hands raised. So we will close the public comment for this item and bring back to the commissions. I do want to do a, a time check and just make sure the commission is prepared to, to wrap up the discussion around 10:45 or 11 if we can.
Yes, and, and that included, we need to, do we have to finish the memorandum today? Or can we table that and put that for the next meeting?
Sure, since this is your item, Chair, if you would like to continue it to another, you're welcome to. I just want to advise the commission that any work done on this item needs to be done in the public setting unless it's part of the agenda packet. So Chair, you're always welcome to draft a memo and put it into the, the packet for a future item for, for public review and discussion. You just would not want to draft it in consultation with commissioners. It would be something you prepared yourself and then deliberated on.
Right. Okay, sounds good. So I'm just, I'm. Right. Okay. Sounds good. So I'm just, I'm concerned about the time that we have. So, um, uh, we have Commissioner Cunningham with her hand raised again. Yes?
Yes, thank you, um, Chair Parish. I wanted to, um, maybe make some historical comments because I know that Commissioner Ados had, um, suggested that, you know. That someone needs to pull together some information for. Historically, the housing element has been something that is done every eight years. And so for forty years, HCD, um, sent out the requirement and the cities all responded. And, um, unfortunately, after the result of forty years of, um, housing elements. Wherein many, many cities in the, uh, state of California have not created housing enough to, um. For its citizens and has created therefore the housing crisis that we have. The new law that came out had some more teeth in it, meaning that they plan to actually, um, um, oversee it. And manage it better. Before you just had to say, we tried and if we didn't build any houses, oh, well, and there was never any, uh. There was nothing that, that happened to the city because they didn't build housing enough for their people. So that is what has happened in this one. It does have more teeth and I do, um, I do, uh, understand that that has caused a lot of perturbation. I do not agree with the characterization oftentimes that you hear from, um, gee, everywhere. Yeah, about the state. I think they're working very hard to solve the high housing crisis, which is severe. And, um, I hope in fact that, uh, my participation in this whole process is to, um, make sure that our city does have a good housing element. And that we do provide, um, housing for all incomes and abilities in our city. We have a number of, uh, ideas, including infill housing, uh, which will combine with transit, which brings people closer to their work. Which means there'll be less traffic. And then, um, so you, you're reducing traffic, which is a big deal for a lot of people. You're also bringing people closer to their work, so they don't have to travel so far. So it reduces commute times. You've got climate change issues because you're reducing carbon, uh, gas.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cunningham, um, may I just comment, I, I, your information and your comment is wonderful. Um, I want to keep it focused on how we as a commission can participate better. So I want to take this time, so what you, if you want to connect it to what we have on the agenda. How can we as commissioners, like what you said, environmental and all those, how can we affect that better and perform our duties? That would, I appreciate that.
Oh, good point. Thank you. I was wondering a bit, um, because I'm very passionate indeed about this. So as far as what I think we should be doing, um, we should be paying attention to, uh, all of these things and providing our individual input as we see fit. And then, um. We'll attend the meeting next week and I don't think that inserting ourselves without understanding what the rest of, uh, how this impacts the rest of the staff and the process is a good idea. So I guess that summarizes it.
No, so, so, um, Commissioner, the, um, there's two things. The planning commission, joint commission that's coming up is one thing. And this agenda item is going forward.
Right.
How we could, so this is not inserting ourselves. This is how we can perform our duties going forward. So i- if you have any ideas on, on that, um, do you want to pause on that and think about that and come back or do?
Well, actually, my answer to that is I don't think that we can put in our ideas. And in, in some kind of, um, pure world. We put in our ideas, somebody says, oh yeah, you have to do that, then the staff has to do something. It's not that simple and I just, um, no, I don't think I have to consider it more. I will consider it more. And I will stop commenting now. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, um, I'm just going to come back to, just wanted to look at, um. In order, it is something I've been looking at and considering for a while. And I, again, highly recommend going back and looking at maybe some minutes from, uh, either Menlo Park or the city here and in. But in order to facilitate innovative approaches forward, what I've seen or of, of my understanding is. We could say, for example, at the end, when we request, uh, an item be added to the agenda. If we requested and coordinated several developers for low income housings to come and talk to us. About what each one requires, for example, um, do they require specific underwriting items? Um, what do they look for in a property? What could we do to incentivize so that we could propose a policy change or an incentive to planning commission? Planning commission does a lot of things and, and based watching them. I have seen some of the items that they do kind of fall into our role, things that are, we're not advising them on. And so I don't, I think this has been by default in one of the meetings, um, um. Mr. Fu, um, I forget his, his position, a community, um, um, manager, I believe. Um, had said, yes, it'll go to the housing committee, commission, but only to, for information only. He wasn't trying to get our input. He wasn't so, and I, I don't think it's, it's, it's. It's just the way it's been done is what I'm trying to say. It's, it's just the way things have been. And so the purpose of this meeting is to maybe perhaps, um, change those. So where we take in any position, if you, if you get hired for a position, the way I see it is. I take on my job and my duty and, and assume the responsibility and how it plays with the other, the other players, right? So if we brought people with, um, from the developers and then if we went site selection. We have six million dollars from Silicon Valley. Uh, we literally could propose a property for six million. We could as a commission, select a property or propose, I mean, that would be an agenda item. Can we consider, does, you know, can we open this up? Do we have what I, what properties, um, can be brought forth? Now with the ability to create a four, uh, five plex, et cetera, six million dollar land, that type of thing. In other words, remember at the beginning, we said we would like X amount of affordable housing to be developed? This is, I, this meeting, I'd like it to be where we think, how can we fulfill this? How do we come up with policies to advise on? Who do we invite? What, again, this is not us to do, but just put on the agenda for us to discuss and us as commissioners bring forth information. And perhaps a proposal that we could, um, submit and help. My, my only concern really is, um. Do we, uh, and I don't know, I thought I heard, I heard some commissions, um, maybe housing manager, um, can, can respond to this. I heard some other commissions are able to have meetings without taking up a staff if they keep meeting, uh, notes. And, and I don't know if it was this city or another city. But if we're able to have a meeting with recorded or otherwise minutes. Are we able to do something where we do work without having to take up your time, Carrie?
Chair Parish, I'm not aware of, um, a commission that would be able to run a public hearing without staff. Um, I don't, you would need the support of this whole infrastructure. And I also wanted to add, um, Chair, that anytime an item comes to housing commission, it is for information and input. And it's considered. And so, for example, today's meeting, there's so much valuable information that's being discussed from both the commissioners and the public. We will, um, make sure to share with staff, enter, basically enter it into the housing element process. So as you are working on, um, the concept of a memo, we're also grabbing information and, and making sure that it's well received. And that it's moved forward and, um, and considered basically. So there's a lot that happens behind the scene, but anytime an item comes before housing commission. Um, as Director Fu had mentioned to you earlier, it is, it is informational and, um, and valuable.
Okay, thank you. I, yes, and that's, that's actually, I kind of want to take that. So I, I don't know if it's worth noting any of the points that we, how do we want to propose? What activities? This is why I wanted to open it for discussion. How can we? Well, if, if our job is to assist planning in developing, um, and council and developing housing policies and strategies. How do we come up with those policies and strategies? If not through information and research, right? So what research? Developers, uh, policies. So do we make it and propose or suggest a policy that only green? Um, builders be, you know, we don't want to limit it, but do you see what I mean? It's just an example of policies we would recommend. So I see two more hands. I missed who came first. Was it Commissioner, uh, Tadachary or Cunningham?
Well, Commissioner Cunningham is the question.
Thank you, um, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I guess one thing I, just keeping in mind what you had said, Tessa, about things that we can do and don't, whatever. Uh, one of the things when I was first, um, on the commission, every, every, um. Every meeting, a planning commissioner had been assigned to come to the housing commission to keep, I guess, that open line of communication. Now, I haven't seen that happen in a very long time, uh, certainly not on a regular basis. So, um, so not to say that they should be or whatever, but maybe that's something that, um. Vice Chair Tadachary was speaking to when he was talking about, um, keeping communications open or whatever. But we could certainly do that, you know, having a housing commissioner, uh, attend, um, planning commission meetings to, to give feedback. Now, given, I don't think you can give feedback from the commission. But you can certainly take information back and bring it to ours. So anyway, just, just a thought. And I also just real quickly wanted to mention that I think there, it could be an ethical issue with, um, a commission selecting properties. It was in our training at, when we took that at the beginning of this year. So I would really caution us to be careful. They don't want to mess up any, um, any below market rate housing, um, selections of properties that we would make. So I guess, uh, that's, that's it. And thank you. I will take down my hands.
Okay, so could you, could you give me a little more info on what you were talking about, the ethical? Are you talking, meaning us pre, bringing a property, specific property? Or I was referring more to like the city has properties that they've identified? Or like the property that was the steakhouse on Deanza? Remember that? That one got.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about. So.
You're talking about, there was, yeah, there was something else that had come up a while back that, that we would pick individual non-city owned property. So I misunderstood.
No worries, no worries. So that, yeah, I just want to clarify that we, we as commissioners can do, uh, propose something like that, I think. But go ahead, um, Commissioner Tadachary.
Yeah, so I think, uh, one of the things I. I hope it happens in the future. It's not, uh, now. But when we actually, uh, go for a commission position, we look at the power, some responsibilities and role. And kind of, you know, look at whether it's what we want to do. Um, if, uh, whatever is the, uh, uh, you know, it's not efficient that you just participate in few of the commission, uh, meetings. But also to be able to wholesomely understand the issue that, uh, that, the, the kind of challenge that, that commission is dealing with. So housing is definitely a very, very important, um, uh, issue, not only for the state, but nationally. And I think participating in a, a part, as part of the housing commission, uh, there are two things. One, uh, needs to highlight, one is the advisory role of the commission. The second is that they do have to participate in the policies and strategies. So there has to be a certain level of either, uh, uh, prior knowledge or people should be prepared, you know, uh, uh. Uh, learn it as they go quickly, as quickly as possible, because we, that's the only way we are going to develop us. The good thing is that we have four years to learn it, but in this, I, I, I just want to say that this year is very, because of the housing element. So that's about area of responsibility. The second is about, you know, a lot of things we cannot do. Because there's an issue of act. So we talk to each other. Only talk i- in this kind of forum, uh, talk, uh, in, as, uh, as a member of the public in other, uh, meetings. So there are areas which cannot, there are certain things which we cannot express or we cannot in, uh, bring it into what I would say. Um, bring it into effect unless you are participating in, and this. So I think one of the things I like about this agenda three is that we are actually able to discuss this item, which otherwise cannot be discussed easily.
Right. So do you, do you have, what is your suggestion for?
So let me come to the suggestion. So I think I do agree that there are ethical issues by getting involved in individual, um. Individual decisions, uh, you know, in terms of site selection or whatever. But there's definitely the, I, that a commission can participate in the process. And there's no reason why we should kind of share. We can participate in the process. We cannot probably get into the idea of how do we, how is an individual site is selected? That's the reason it's handed over to a consultant. Uh, so I think I, I, I tend to agree, uh, with the observation made by, um, Commissioner Cunningham. That, you know, we need to be very careful about, uh, where the boundaries lie. But at the same time, unless we are prepared to take and, uh, you know, participate very, very well in the process. And, you know, accept our, uh, responsibilities and find a way to execute them. Because there are so many ideas that can come and there are so many ways we can effectuate, uh, our, ourselves to be, uh, a better commission. And also be able to play a better advisory role. Pretty much that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, um. I don't know if this is something we could, that I just thought of this right now is, is I'm considering all this. So if we are to be every, um, anything housing, people think of the housing commission. I'll, I'll never forget for about four years ago, um, we had a different council and what, an item had come up. And one of the council members actually asked, has this gone to housing? The item hadn't gone to housing and he said, what's it doing here? Why isn't it going to housing and why is it coming to us without the advice from, or the recommendation from housing? And that was the first time I, I, my ears perked up about housing. Because I think the role is a lot more important. And if everyone in the city, if we made, if we did our jobs, if we do our jobs, because I'd like to see it going forward, our jobs well enough. It's not us making a comment as an individual, because that's not what the, the responsibilities are. So we are as a commission, are, that's our responsibility. Um. If we, if everyone thinks, hey, there's this item, uh, on housing, on, uh, coming up for environmental impact. What does the housing commission have to say about that? If we were in tune with whatever, everything that's happening out, everything, everywhere else in the city, planning or otherwise. Then we would be called upon to advise and we would have already had a meeting to discuss that. Do you see what I mean? So I kind of think it's, it's intertwined and it's part of planning it beforehand. So if we see that, for example, um, the, you, um, low income and very low income. That is coming, that was coming up in the Hamptons or the wherever. And they want it, if we were involved, we would have had a meeting to discuss that. And decided to send a recommendation or proposal to planning or even had a joint session during that. Do you see what I'm saying? If, if people, if the city thought anything housing, housing commission. They would, we would be involved at, as part of the process. And that's where I think we need to make ourselves known to the rest of the city. Um, by the way, um, Mayor, as soon as Commissioner Tadachary mentioned that, uh, during the city council meeting. That we were not as involved, Mayor Paul was surprised and he said, oh. Now that we know that a commission is being underutilized. And just prior to that, Mayor and Vice Mayor had worked on our handbook to make sure that we were participating. So I think it's, I don't, it's, I don't think it's fair to say that if we're not being called upon, it's because the city council doesn't want us to. This happened way before that. Like I said, with the previous council members, things weren't going to housing commission either. Um, so it's, but again, it's a part of how it's, things are being done. And now going forward, I'd like, I personally would like to see our role being fulfilled as a commission. Where they think housing, what does a housing commission have to say about that? Has a housing commission, and either they send it to us beforehand so that it's ready when they need to have their meeting. Or we, if we're already involved with everything else, have already planned on that meeting to be, basically give input. How we can accomplish that is, I hopefully be what I'm trying to discuss here. How we can accomplish that is, I hopefully, the what I'm trying to discuss here.
So Commissioner Parish, if I may speak, I'm not able to raise my hand for some reason.
Okay. Is that okay, Commissioner Cunningham, if she speaks for now? I was, yeah, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Vos.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Parish. Uh, so I believe that uh in order to move forward in the action that we should, given the abilities as put down, um, we need to, just like you have done in this case, put it down on our list of items to be discussed at the future meetings and then we can discuss those items at the meeting. And in that way, we will have the support of the staff and be discuss the items and be able to assist the Planning Commission and give recommendations to the city as needed. Does that make any sense?
Yes. Yes.
I wanted to, I, go ahead, Chair Parish.
Go ahead.
Sure, I, for the benefit of the group, I wanted to mention that the future agenda item, we keep a list of the commission's desire, but these are all based on resources and budget in addition to the work program. So any item that comes before you ahead of staff resources or budget would need to be chair initiated with the agenda item and the materials like today. But an item like um any item that requires staff time really has to be considered in the bigger picture. And I just, I wanted to just make sure you're aware that it might not happen as expeditiously as you'd like. Even if we all wanted to, it's just, we we have a lot going on.
Yes, thank you. And my hopes is that we have a fully manned staff soon and and we, that's we're not taking too much of a burden on you, Housing Manager. Um, yes, so so Sue, going back to what you just said, then, my, um, is it possi- what do you think about like if um we consider when we say any items to uh add to the agenda? We also consider during that, are there any other commissions or anything else happening within the city that we need to look at? Is it something we can perhaps on our own do or do we need to? I don't think we can add it to the agenda, but we could consider that as a commission.
So the the point, the point that Kerry was making and uh based on what I understand, the way the Housing Commission works is whatever we do and in order to uh go according to the Brown Act's rules, we have to do it within the the limitations of the meeting. And um it would have to be within the meeting. We cannot go and do things outside the meeting.
Oh, that's, that was, I wasn't proposing that.
I didn't understand, sorry.
Okay, so what I'm saying is during, after every meeting or during, you know, like at the end, one of our items is um any suggestions for new items on the agenda. Maybe we can on our own consider, are there any, is there anything else happening within the city that we need to be looking at from a housing point of view? In other words, we should consider what this, the rest of the commissions, City Council needs and see if we should be preparing for that when we consider newer newer items on the agenda.
And for a time check, Chair Parish, I would recommend about ten more minutes on this item so that we we can get to the um to the future agenda items and the commission reports. We have um staffing available until about eleven o'clock. So I can help, I can help you with timing moving forward too.
Yes, and and based on what what I'm, what's happening, I think we need to um table this item, the memorandum and maybe like you, take up your advice on that, okay? Commissioner Cunningham?
I mean, I would like to make an addition then to the the comments about the letter that you're going through, which is, um, you know, we're asking to be involved in things. One of the things that is most beneficial to affordable affordable housing is uh land policies. And many of our land policies within general plan do not allow um the low market rate housing to be built. Um, some of those are height limits, some setbacks, those kinds of things. So I think we want to uh add that to the kinds of things that we would want to be involved in. Thank you.
So I'm, because I want to make sure to have it correctly, what would you like the it to can, do you want to research, add an item perhaps, or that we consider the policies of land policies? Is that what you, can you summarize it for me?
Yeah, right here in the in the thing, it says, such as discussing affordable housing strategies and funding sources and so forth. You say um including land use policies and so forth. I mean, just as a as a thing that we would be wanting to be involved in, you know, discussing land use policies.
So we would add an item to the agenda to say that for us to re-study up a little bit on on what we currently have and what we'd like to propose?
Well, I'm just speaking to your recommended action.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and how we do that, I think, comes after we figure out the letter.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. That's, that's a good one. I definitely will add that. Anything else? Commissioner Tadachary?
Yeah, just to add to what Commissioner Cunningham said, uh land use policies are definitely part of the general plan creation process. So I think, you know, it's uh what she brought up is a very valid point. Uh, there are things which constrain us from building affordable housing, uh BMR house especially. So I think uh uh it's pretty, I I would guess that it is something on which the commission uh have a discussion and make recommendations. Uh, anyway, we are advised.
Okay, so just wanted to uh wrap it up then. I'm, I think this is gonna be, we're gonna need a little more discussion and perhaps from now till the next meeting, we could have more, you know, um brainstorming on this item, on how we could um be connected to the rest of the commissions, rest of what's happening in the city, in this case, the housing element, and prepare to finish up and and um pre- prepare the memorandum that we need to come up with. So we'll table the memorandum for next. Anybody else have any comments um before we close?
Parish, if if you can pause right there, I'm gonna, my, I I want to review the agenda and make sure we capture the conclusion of this. Okay. Give me one moment. Um, so there is a recommended action for this item, which indicates we need a vote. So if the commission wants to make a clear recommended action, what I'm hearing is to um continue the item, but you might want to be really specific about what you're looking for. Chair Parish, it also is a possibility for you to submit a draft memo in the next packet to give the commission a place to to work off of and the public the opportunity to review. Um, so I could use your assistance with a very precise recommended action and and then I can help you with the roll call.
Identifying opportunities. Yes, I definitely want to do that because I think this, the memorandum would make ourselves known in a possibly uh city manager and city council uh opportunities for the Housing Commission to contribute where um, yeah, okay. I, I will take that opportunity, then I'll send you a draft to um for you to review and and then we can table the rest of the discussion for next meeting.
So I, what I'm hearing is that the recommended action would be for Chair Parish to draft a memo for consideration at a a future hearing. Um, and then we can coordinate with staff on dates. Is that, is that, am I capturing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so if a commissioner wants to propose that motion exactly how it, or excuse me, propose the recommended action, how you'd like it to be, I can conduct a roll call.
Okay.
Uh, is is that a way that you can uh uh just repeat that uh um the thing so that I can just say, I propose that?
Sure, and I actually, Chair Parish, with with this being your item, I can support you if you'd like or or you can bring this forward.
I I I was just gonna say exactly what you just said, which was um for Chair Parish to uh prepare a draft uh for to, for the commissioners to consider uh preparing and sending the memorandum to the City Council and City Manager, identifying the opportunities uh for Housing Commission to contribute to the housing element, et cetera. But um is it possible to maybe tweak and change that a bit and and say it not just for the housing element, but just in general? Because it does say housing element update process, such as discussing affordable housing, et cetera, discussing panel joint meetings, but it it kind of makes it the way it, this is worded and and it's fine for this. But is it possible to tweak it so it's just in general, not just specific to the housing elements?
Item brought forth today is specific to the housing element, so I would caution against that because we didn't have public input. But what I would suggest in your motion is to be clear that the, or excuse me, in your recommended action is to be clear that the the memo will be for consideration at a future Housing Commission public hearing. And then, and then we, when the memo is prepared, um it will be released in the packet. That's the part that we'll help you with on the backend.
Okay.
Okay, so I I do propose that uh if it is possible to add uh one housing element related uh related uh discussions, because that includes general plan changes too. So you know, whatever land use policies that Commissioner Cunningham was talking about, uh that becomes a part of the housing element discussion, so.
Okay.
So I I propose that uh we, I I I motion to have that change uh that agenda item included, sorry.
Okay. Do you want exact verbiage from the, for the motion, Kerry?
Yeah, I would recommend, uh if we, if it's possible, Kerry, if you could, um, I mean, uh Housing Manager Kerry, if you could actually, uh, you know, may stay, uh, kind of spell it out in, uh, it actually very helpful to all of us.
Sure, sure. Let me do my best to capture. So the um, the recommended action would be to um and we'll fine tune it on the backend again, but the best on the fly is to say that um Chair Parish will prepare a draft memorandum to the City Council and City Manager, identifying opportunities for the Housing Commission to contribute to the housing element update process, such as discussing affordable housing strategies and funding sources and discussing planned and potential joint meetings with other legislative bodies. Uh, and continue this item to a future um Housing Commission meeting. So it's capturing your current recommended action, putting putting a draft and then the action, putting a draft in motion and the action will be for the commission to come back and review. And if that is in the spirit of what you want to, Chair Parish.
Yes, that's, that's, that's exactly, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
I propose, I propose a motion motion based on uh how the the uh the elucidation of uh the agenda item as uh as identified by Kerry.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Excellent. I heard all ayes. The motion passes. And I think that's it. Let's see if we have any other items here. Uh, staff and commission reports. Do we have any reports, Kerry?
Sure, so I wanted to um, so now, let's see. I wanted to report on making sure all of you are aware of the June twenty eight Housing Element Joint Workshop, our joint, excuse me, joint meeting, um that was discussed earlier for, but for the benefit of the public. Please join us at the June twenty eight Housing Element Joint Commission Meeting. And then um also wanted to give you an update now that the fiscal year is coming to a close. We will be bringing the homeless jobs program to Housing Commission for a report on this year. Um, we also are actively working on the city plan to end homelessness and the Santa Clara County point in time homeless count numbers are being released soon. Um, and so once those numbers come out, we will be able to incorporate them into the Cupertino draft and then um have that closer to a final draft and and public review and comment. So that's significant underwork, significant work underway this summer and fall. And I think, I think for now, that's all. And just a reminder to report on any attendance at the monthly mayor's meeting.
Thank you. That, thank you, and Commissioner Tadachary?
Yeah, I I just wanted to um quickly summarize the mayor's meeting. Uh, so I I had participated, I think I was nominated to participate, so I participated in it. And um I, uh, the 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 commissions uh like Park and Rec, Dean, Library, Information Technology and, uh, you know, the, uh, all those other commissions also participated. Highlights are that the Library Commission made a presentation in terms of, you know, the typical statistics involved in terms of how it's being used, as well as the, you know, that that the library expansion is completed and there there was a picture shown of the, you know, new meeting facilities and stuff like that. And it is very interesting because I think just for about twenty five dollars, one can get an excellent meeting uh facility for uh four hours. Um, it's, it's a very, uh, it looks, it looks really good. Uh, so that's one tidbit I wanted to share, that particular meeting. Uh, yeah, I think uh it should not be for for profit use, it can be for any purposes by nonprofit or uh something which, you know, just like you, somebody wants to say a recipe, you know, share recipes or something like that, I guess.
So where is this?
This is in the library. You have a library rooms available of different sizes.
Excuse me, I just wanted to clarify, um Commissioner Tadachary was reporting back on the mayor's meeting. So he's saying the highlight was the uh from the library. And and thank you, Commissioner Tadachary. I think we've come to the end of our time. Um, is it, did you want, did you finish your report, Commissioner Tadachary?
Yeah, just one, one more thing. So I did bring up the issue of housing element and future. So I'm very uh happy that we made progress because I discussed the work items, I the status of the last meeting, et cetera. And then, you know, I, in terms of housing element, I was talking about issues uh for free site selection, timeline, cons- what else remains and development disabled, um housing for developmentally disabled. And I was uh trying to figure out the way that we can have, um, we can better inform residents uh who are especially in, you know, housing challenged people in terms of existing programs. And I, this is being done, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
I like.
Okay, so we can't discuss it, it was just.
Looking at, that's it.
Report, thank you.
And I have a presenter I can share with the, with the, I will send it to, um, she can share it with the other commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. And then um next item is uh whether or not there are any recommendations for future agenda items?
Uh, what about other commissioners? Do they want to give any update?
Well, that's what I'm asking right now. Does anybody, the next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Setting. So does anybody have any ideas or recommendations for future agenda items? Okay, so with that, then, I know we're out of time. I'd like to end our meeting, so meeting adjourned. And did you have anything else to say, Kerry?
No, thank you. Stay tuned for um for the packet, for the upcoming joint meeting. And I really appreciate all your time you're spending on this here at the commission level and then outside in your personal time to contribute. Thank you all.
And thank you.
Happy times, everybody.
Thank you. Bye bye.